Christina, did you retain this off or no?
Yep.
That's it?
Yep.
Okay Christina, you're ready to go? We'll call the meeting to order and do the roll call.
Clark?
Here.
Fish?
Here.
Jorgensen?
Here.
Cole?
Here.
Parliament?
Here.
Steen?
Here.
Mayor Buck?
Here. Approval agenda? Motion on second to approve the agenda, any further discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Pose, same sign? Motion carries. Public comments? I don't think we probably have any public comments, I think everybody here is an employee or a council member, so we'll just move forward. Capital improvements?
Well, here we are. I thought we'd start off with kind of reviewing where we're at with the current CIP, including the adopted CIP plan and then the changes or tweaks due to increased interest rates and/or construction costs, then we can move on to revenue projections. And then the third thing for today would be any other projects that aren't included on the CIP, so if you want to take a look at it, so we can get you some numbers. So, on the second page of your packet, you've got the 2022 through 2026 CIP. 2022 is pretty much done, or we're in construction. And then 2023 is there. You know, we're looking at core area reconstruction, we're looking at pool lift station, and that's green as sewer, blue as red, or blue as water, as a reminder. Water treatment plant, that will be broken up over the next couple of years anyway. Bethany Sewer Main, rehabbed well number six.
Is the Bethany Sewer Main the?
The site.
What we call the east side?
Yep. Rehab the sixth, that'll happen this year. Rushmore area reconstruction, Sewer Main to Sioux Falls, and rehab the existing.
The second main?
Yep.
Second main?
Then that west Sewer Main is already under construction. Park CIP and then rainwater management CIP down at the bottom. So, we're about 23 and a half, 23.4 million for next year, for 2023.
It's based on old costs?
That's based on old costs. That's the cost from last year. If you move on to the next page, you're going to see some dramatic changes in some of these cost estimates. For instance, Ironwood Extension that we were looking at doing this year is 1.4 million and in last year, the current CIP plan has been revised up to a little over 2 million for next year, if we do it next year. Big Sioux Drainage bumps up from 900,000 to about 1.3.
Is there any, we don't have any way out of that?
For the Big Sioux Drainage? No. That drainage structure that's down by the river is
I know.
toast.
But it's, but it's all our responsibility that part of it?
Yep. Since it's our storm water. You know, the Rushmore area reconstruction went from 2.9 to 4.9.
So, are you just basing this on like concrete costs and stuff, or how are we?
The Rushmore one's a little differently because we added some other streets and there's some infrastructure problems there, I'll let Tammy explain what's going on in the Rushmore.
Yeah, so, so the costs we took?
The costs we took were from the core area project that we just bid out, so we used those updated numbers. You know, we don't know if that's really going to go up or go down, but that's the best we have for right now. Rushmore area, if you remember, we wanted to do this originally in three phases, and then we kind of broke it out into a few smaller phases. So, after looking at like Kirkwood and the last little bit of Cedar, we're really not gaining much by making that its own phase. Plus, we have a manhole out there that's starting to collapse, and so if we don't add it into this, we're still going to have to go in there and do something with it. So, we just looked at the cost estimate and just went in to include it. I mean, if we're going to tear up the road, then it makes sense to just do it at the same time.
So, part of this increased cost is part of the expanding costs?
Yeah. So, we certainly could go back to the original plan, but then just know that we're going to have some other construction through there.
So, this cost has gone up by a million dollars? And that's apples to apples, though?
Yeah.
So, it's two million, I think.
Over two, two one?
Is it over?
The Sewer Main to Sioux Falls and rehab the existing, the total cost originally was 7.4 million. That cost estimate is now 17.
Oh, can that go up that much?
That's the number that?
That's the pipe. The pipe has gone up that much.
That pipe, yeah. It's in demand and they're having trouble. Yep. We're seeing a lot of the increase in pipe costs, special plastic pipe costs, because with the ARPA funds that have been released, everybody's building. Yep, yep.
Do we think that that might be something that could wait a year, maybe those costs should come down? That's our redundancy line, right?
Yep. You know, maybe?
Just realize we might have to start using the ponds for those higher flows.
I know, I don't want to do that.
Because that, that force main is running 80% plus now, capacity. So, if you remember our discussion, for those of you that are new, that obviously don't, but you try to get underdesigned at 80% capacity in your system, and have it completed when you're about 90% capacity, so that you never pump it up against that full capacity. So, we're at that 80%, so we should be underdesigned or getting underway with design fairly soon.
I just wonder if those, who knows if those costs will come down anyway, you know, those pipe costs and stuff are?
Doubtful.
Yeah.
Very doubtful.
Think they'll just keep them up there and say?
Absolutely.
Yeah, they usually go up, but you never see them come down. I mean, it's always, oh, oil prices are up.
Yeah.
Resin, you know, makes the plastic pipes, so you'd think that when oil prices drop to $80 a barrel again, they come down, but they never seem to come down quite as much.
And Metro works that way, doesn't it?
No, it doesn't.
You know, that goes from 350 to four, four, and then drops to four eight, or 380, and it stays there.
So, are there any ARPA-type funds available for this stuff?
ARPA? ARPA will be done after, if it's not done after this round, it'll be done after the July round, it'll be, it'll be gone. That'll be gone. That, that's really what I'm talking about, that 600 million, they allocated 400 and some million on the January 1st round, and now they have the April round that they have to allocate, and then they'll have the July round. I don't foresee there being much, if any, in the July round. Yep.
So, the ARPA money is the infrastructure, build, and stuffs?
That, I mean, that, I think the earliest that we're slating for this anyway is 2024, so, but, because we're in preliminary design now, we still have to go through design. There's some land negotiations and all that that has to go on, and we have to work with Excel on it. I'd say the earliest that we would start building it or anyway or constructing it would be 24.
Yeah, with majority of being at 25.
So, we've done how much from the infrastructure?
Right now, the only thing that we're, is guaranteed is the seven and a half million for the treatment plan.
The western treatment?
Oh, that one hasn't been, that one's sent in, but it hasn't been officially approved yet.
Any grants out there, Tammy?
No, not really, not for something like this.
Are we still thinking 406 is going to happen in 24?
24, yeah, 24.
I did up that, just because we're seeing up, increased costs all over, you know, we kind of estimated 500,000, I did up it to a million, because we're not really sure what the state is going to make us pay, number one, and with all of the costs increasing, I wanted to make sure that we're accounted for. We have some utilities in there.
Yep, we've got utilities, and then the big discussion we're having with DOT is Express Avenue, that back way into Holiday Inn.
That mess.
Yes, since they're, you know, closing off one of those entrances, you know, the only way to back into Holiday Inn would be through Express Avenue. Fortunately, when Express Avenue was platted and built, it wasn't platted to just any standards, it was basically platted as a private access, although we own it, it's a public road. You know, if you drive back there, it's got 90-degree bends, there's really not enough property at this point in time to smooth out those bends or those curves. So, DOT, I think they're still indicating that we need to pay to upgrade it, although that's open for discussion.
Yeah, the last thing they kind of brought back was maybe we split it 50/50, but again, we don't have a cost estimate put together on any of that or what we would do, because those landowners would have to play nice, too. Somebody would lose some land throughout it, and nobody seems willing to give it up at this point.
It doesn't seem right, but we should have to take that.
Well, that was our stance with DOT, but?
Yeah, we're kind of like the river. What about the rotary, is that going to be through the, if that we go through in Aspen and Split Rock, is that a state cost, or is that going to be through that MPO thing?
The roundabout?
Yeah, I always call it the roundabout.
Oh, okay, yeah, the roundabout. So, the roundabouts, so that stretch of Split Rock is programmed on the DOT's STIP for 2028, and they just put it in the last year of their STIP plan, and so I would mostly assume that that's going to be 2030 or later by the time they actually do it. The one thing?
Right now, it's beyond our five-year.
Yep.
Yeah.
It's out there.
But yes, that's a DOT cost. They do look at both alternatives, whether it was putting in a signal or a roundabout. If the signal was cheaper, then if we wanted the roundabout, we would have to pay that difference. It's going to come back as the roundabout's the cheaper route, and so that's what they are going to want to do, and that's on, that's their cost.
Really, the only thing that we need to plan for with that Highway 11 expansion or improvement with DOT is, we've talked about connecting well number three into the dwell seven, pipe into the treatment plant. So, other than that, we may have some sidewalks that we want to put in.
Sidewalks, streetscaping, art, you know, make it pretty.
Yeah, the big thing's going to be the connection of well number three, which is located behind the high school offices. We'd run it along, in the right-of-way and then connect in where well seven comes up just to the south of railroad tracks. We're not worried. We're not worried about that right at the moment, just to leave that in your memory. Four. Well, in two years, we'll be talking about it.
Park, Park Street, Park Street, that's Maple.
Park Maple?
We don't have that, we think that's farther out.
It's going to have to be. You know, what's in city limits, we'll probably be more developer-driven, and so that'll be a special assessment project. And then everything else is kind of outside of city limits, and we opted not to apply for the grant funding anymore, just because the new regulations are for disadvantaged communities and diversity and that sort of thing, and we don't meet those qualifications.
Golf course CIP bumps up, park CIP goes down, rainwater management, we added some costs there, and we can go through those. What am I missing? So, like you said, there's been some changes in prices. The other thing that, that will impact these projects is interest rates. You know, last year, muni bonds were about 2%. We're looking at a 4% interest rate now, within anticipation that that's going to continue to rise at least four more times this year. So?
Kind of looking at quarterly increases, aren't they?
Yeah, the, the last one that they did, what, last month, was a little bit higher than what I thought it would be.
Yeah, that surprised most people.
So, I, I think they're trying to put a brake on the economy a little bit harder than they originally anticipated. So, you know, if that strategy works, inflation might drop. You know, it's running about, what, 8%, now a little over 8? So, if that stays up there, the interest rates will continue to increase. If it drops, hopefully it will, the interest rate should stabilize maybe quicker. What's, what's the mortgage rates these days?
Four and a half.
Four and a half?
We just locked in our core bond at 4.12, so when we did projections last year, we were projecting 3%, and we're at 4.1 now, so.
In the golf course projections, are we expecting FEMA to come pay some of that? Or what, what's it? It was 700,000 between 22, 23, now it's 2.6 million between 22, 23. I see the wall, some of that, but where's the rest of that, the rest there?
The wall is some of that, I think the other one was the bunkers and turf. I think originally we ended up to go back and look, I don't know if we actually slated that in, because we were waiting for the FEMA to come through, and now that that's come through, that's in there. Actually, I think the bunkers and turf was anticipated to be in 21, and we moved it to 22, because we were waiting on FEMA, that would be why. But the other one is the, the wall, we got an updated cost projections on that as well, so we bumped that up.
Christina, did you say we received the FEMA money?
No, they approved it.
They approved it.
Yeah.
We, we won't receive until the projects are totally done.
Yeah, and then it'll be probably three months after that, so. 679,000.
Where's that in, in here?
The bunkers?
No, the, that 679, is that just a, the number here is a net, a net app?
That's in the 2022 number, so the total there is 1.8. I'm going to pull that up. And that would be, be between the wall and the bunkers and turf. And then the golf course number in 2023 would just be the wall. And that's just really a guess on how much, would be done this year, because we would anticipate starting that project this fall, and then half, hopefully, we get done this year, half next year, would kind of be the plan.
And, and based upon the revised cost estimate, the engineer took another look at it, they got a quote from a shoring construction company, so that, that cost has been revised up to 1.6 is what they told us, we think that's short. We think it's going to be closer to 2, to do that golf course wall. And they're working on a couple of other alternatives that we haven't seen yet, very briefly described, so I'm not sure what they're talking about in their email to us. They were looking at three options, one was shoring that upper wall, that's this, in between the, the deck and the car path, and then two other alternatives, they didn't really explain that they're still working on.
That's the short.
Yep. Yep. Yeah, I'm not sure, the other two options, like one was leaving the existing wall and building around it.
Right, leaving that existing wall and just building a new one, you know, then you lose some of that, like just at the top of the patio, which probably isn't the end of the world, but at the same time, then you still have that old material behind there, too. So, is it ideal? No? Would it probably work? Yes?
And I can't remember what the other, the other alternative was, but like you said, we haven't, we haven't, oh, there it is. An alternate retaining wall system. Yeah. So?
So, Tammy, and I would like to report, so have we presented the trail, we have the results from trail studies, or have we?
Um, yes and no, I mean, we have some of the cost estimates in that. We're going to have them revise that draft report just a little bit, after going through some of the other committees that were part of that, and then we'll get that out to the public, but I'm just going to make it known on there that none of these projects are in the budget, and this is just a high-level concept plan of what we want.
We don't have anything integrated with that.
Right, we don't.
Could we consistently get the complaint of trying to get the kids on the east side over to Aspen, and the kids that have lost in the shower, safe room? And those are two expensive projects?
Yeah, they, they submitted that to us last week, the Art Board.
Yep.
So, they've got a number of comments, or staff has a number of comments anyway, that they need to put into their report or change in their report.
It's a slow-moving study.
Yeah.
Get it done by the end of the year.
Yeah, they are.
I think it's 9 million over the next 20 years.
Well, that's, and that's just to fill in the gaps.
Well, yeah, but some of that's not all city, either, some of that's property owners who've been?
Yeah, there's 9 million in sidewalk costs just to fill in the gaps, which includes, I think that includes the core, yes.
Yeah.
And then there's another 16 million in a wish list for trails. So, total cost for trails and sidewalks over the next however many years is about 25, 26 million.
But if we have a plan, and we could put it into small little projects, here and there, oh yeah, this is what it sounds like, right?
You know, that next page, just going over the, the differences in project costs, you've got Ironwood goes from 1.4 to 2.4, or 2.3. The Big Sioux Drainage is up, the water treatment plant, which has already been bid, we know that one for sure.
And that's over the life of the 30-year?
Yeah, the water treatment plant?
Yeah.
No, that's just construction.
Well, you have the bid, and then you have construction admin, you have engineering, and you have testing, and you have?
Doesn't include interest. Doesn't include interest over the next 30.
I didn't take that wrong.
When we look at cost estimate, we should just look at total cost, we don't take out other funds. The Bethany Sewer, 1.1 to 3.8. Rushmore Phase 2, we talked about a little bit, the Sewer Main to Sioux Falls is the big, the big change. The West Sewer Main's been bid. Redwood Chestnut, we, that's the cost estimate, the change, that's the annexation roads that we aren't annexing. The exit 406, and then the golf course retaining wall, so we're looking at about 26 million if we were going to do all of those projects, the largest one is that Sewer Main to Sioux Falls.
I do feel like the cost estimate might be a little bit high, especially on engineering side, since there's really three phases to getting that in, and two of those phases, the city of Sioux Falls is getting those out, so we're saving a lot if we can work with them on their timelines. If you remember, like, we first added in our line into their new Edworks building, well, they did pull that out, because they pulled out their 240 line, so whenever they have the money to put in their 240, that's when we would go in and put ours in with them, too. So, we'd still be letting them build it out and do all the construction admin and that kind of stuff.
So, you think that they're going to build it on this time, this timeline of 24?
Yeah, I mean, they wanted it in this year, so maybe it's a next-year project or the year after, I think our timeline will work out pretty well, once we get to that point.
If we, if we decide to spend 17 million dollars to add another line to Sioux Falls, and they decide next year to give us our three-year notice, then why?
You're glooming doom here. Yeah, I thought I was a pessimist.
I mean, it could happen.
It could, it could, but their plan is, they're upgrading their plant or expanding their plant, so they're moving forward with that plant expansion. You know, the only, about the only way I would see them cutting us off would be, hey, we're, we're not going to expand, we've got enough growth of our own, we're kicking you guys out, here's your three-year notice. If that's the case, we would probably go back to what started this whole conversation with shipping all of our wastewater to Sioux Falls was building our own facility. When we looked at that, oh geez, how many years ago now? Five, six, at least? The original cost estimate to build a new facility, which was a SAGR system, which was a, a new thing, was about 15 to 17 million.
Back then.
Back then. Once we took a, a further dive into that, we didn't think that the SAGR system would meet our needs for the future, so we started looking at a mechanical facility, just like Sioux Falls has, smaller scale, but same thing. That price increased from 15 to 17 million to 25 to 30 million to build our own, our own mechanical facility, not taking into account where we would put it. You know, we certainly have the old pond site, which we currently own, and all of the wastewater currently flows there, however, that is not the location for a wastewater treatment plant.
And I don't think that was operation, that was just a building.
That was just a building.
Yeah, that wasn't operating.
So, you know, with that in mind, that's not a good location to build a wastewater treatment plant, because prevailing winds are out of the northwest, west, and even mechanical plants stink. So, we were looking south of town at property that Bukowski owns, south of Housits. So, again, we would need to find a willing seller. The property owners adjacent to that property are not happy. I know when word got out that we were looking south of town someplace, I had attorneys calling me.
Yep.
I think the next day. And that 25 to 30 million, I don't think included rerouting the sewer. We'd convert the Big Sioux Lift Station to pump everything south then.
So, it's 80 million now?
Hey, you know, you're, you're probably looking at 30 to 40 would kind of be my guess.
Harrisburg just built one for 40, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, what are other smaller towns doing? What's Harrisburg doing? What's T do?
Harrisburg just built one for 40, right?
Yep.
What's T, like, what's T Hartford, what are they doing?
Hartford is, is expanding their ponds. T, I'm not sure what T is. That's right. Harrisburg chose not to pump theirs to Sioux Falls, because it would have cost them an extra 7 million right up front that they didn't have, so they built a $40 million facility.
And this is not, is this, I mean, this is a, a revenue generator for Sioux Falls to do, assuming?
We pay, we pay the same rates that Sioux Falls residents do, so, you know, they're not charging us any more than?
More residents.
Yeah.
I think it was a really sound decision that we made, so I think we have to hope that what you're asking about here doesn't happen, but like, it could, I suppose.
It could, but, you know, Sioux Falls has really been pushing this regional system, and, and the state is really encouraging a regionalization as well, so I don't foresee Sioux Falls kicking us out, that would really hamper their cause at the state. But thanks for bringing it up, Harry.
You got any land you can sell us for that here?
No. And I don't want my neighbors to, either.
Why do we leave Redwood and Chestnut in?
I just put it in there just for the cost difference. I don't, I don't have it in the actual capital improvement plan, the draft plan, it's not in there, it's not slated for a year, it's just kind of a note of what we had anticipated last year at 3 million, to now it's 8 and 1/2 million, so.
Yep.
TB and Jay?
Yeah. And they step up, and actually, well, that land, create some infrastructure, same way up the city, or the school. Create some infrastructure, same way with the city for the school. We need some sort of placeholder in there, or how do we, what about that?
I don't, I don't know. I mean, we could certainly, um.
Yeah, but I think that that's. I don't know, we used to have placeholders on some stuff, the Art Board never came to fruition.
You know, I, I, I think as far as that annexation goes, the, the residents out there spoke loud and clear that they don't want us, don't want to have anything to do with us. I don't think they realize the issues that are coming. You know, with the construction of that school slated open in twenty twenty-six, twenty-five? And TB and J, you know, they're talking about four hundred and fifty housing units over the next eight to ten years. That may be quicker once that elementary school is built. That's kind of the, the case. You know, you're looking at eighteen hundred vehicle trips just out of the subdivision. You know, assuming that both parents work, which is the norm these days, not including runs to the grocery store or anything else. Not including any vehicles dropping their kids off at the elementary school. So you could see easily two thousand vehicle trips added to that gravel road. I think it's inevitable too, um, but my opinion is it should be driven by the residents. They don't want us.
At this point.
You know, I hate to, I hate to say that, 'cause I can, I can see what's coming. The crash is coming. You know, if the school gets built in twenty twenty-five, um, that will be a ton of pressure on that road then. I mean, if, if you drive by one of the elementary schools in town now, you, you can see the traffic that's generated.
Tell me this, if the school gets built, you know, before anything happens to Redwood and Chestnut, who has to pave the street to get to the school?
The school? We consider them a private developer, so they'll, they'll.
That's it should be.
TB and J and the school will need to work out that road going east-west from Chestnut to the school.
So they would hook onto, to our city limits and
They would.
Go to the north to get to the entrance of the school?
Yep. Yeah, they would go, I think if memory serves me right, uh, their road connection, the east-west connection coming up off Chestnut would be about three hundred feet north of where the pavement currently ends. Top of the hill. There has been some discussion with them about bringing Sunshine, Sunrise, which sun is it?
Sunshine.
Sunshine, north, um, through Berkman's property.
But that's gonna be a school.
Correct.
Budget issue.
It's gonna be, I mean, Sunshine's gonna take you right to the school almost, so.
So those are the big changes. Um, you know, those, those anticipated or estimated cost increases, increases in revenue are certainly gonna have an impact on planned projects. Uh, quite frankly, we're not gonna be able to do all of them that we've got in our current plan. So.
Go to the next page.
Nope, so if you go to, if you go to the next page.
Yeah. So revenue, we can go over that a little bit. Property tax, property tax is pretty consistent. It's usually at about a five percent increase or somewhere around in there, so that we can't change really any unless you're considering opt-out. Um, so property tax there is, is pretty consistent. Sales tax, um, you know, it, we're doing good right now. Um, I did kind of review, um, this April, the last April, a lot of the numbers I'm seeing that are increasing is due to construction. Um, construction costs, fuel, those kind of items. You know, our budget this year is three seven. What we're getting in right now, I'd anticipate, will be at the four. Last year we were at four one. So I did bump that up next year in the, in these projections to four million for sales tax. I do feel that there probably be, will be a downturn at some point. Um, when that will be, we don't know. Um, the sales tax number is pretty up and down. They do have a remote sellers or online sales report now that has actually been down the last three months. So that's interesting, um.
Well, I think people are reverting back to their old buying habits.
Yep. Going to Sioux Falls instead of buying online, going, you know, it just depends. So that's where I have the sales tax number at, and then I have it increasing by three percent each year after that.
So Harry, with, with rising interest rates, do you think that that will slow down that east side development? Cause they said four hundred and fifty doors in ten years. Or do, or is such a demand here that it's gonna override that? What do you think?
My gut feel is that, um, that demand might be getting just a little bit softer. Um, you know, the new housing starts are down thirty percent in the first quarter this year versus last year. I think that's due, my gut feel is that that's probably due a little bit to interest rates and, and construction costs. Um, as far as, uh, you know, right now, there's a dozen houses for sale. And last year, a few times, it got down to three. I mean, so it's, it's, but also in the past, it's been as high as seventy-five. So, I mean, I think it's gonna continue to be pretty good, but maybe not quite as strong.
Yeah, things are, like Harry said, things are starting to slow down a little bit. The projections that I've seen, twenty twenty-three is kind of when the, the market slows down.
Where's our pos, posing starts for the year ahead?
Um, I'll take a look. It's, it's below last year. We had a slower start.
Twenty-four to seventeen.
Yeah.
In the first quarter.
Yeah, that was my next question, is how do you compare ourselves?
We're down a little bit, slower start, picked up a little bit over the last three, four weeks.
Yeah, I think, I think those were the numbers at planning and zoning last week. I think it was twenty-four last year in the first quarter and seventeen this year.
So if the, if the housing slows down, then that would impact our sales.
It would impact our sales tax. You know, things up and coming, I don't, you know, there's talk of the Hague Development out there getting some retail. I don't know how much we're gonna gain off that. Will we gain some? Yes, but I think it's gonna disperse between some of the grocery stores as well. I ninety Plaza is, seems to be pretty slow. I don't foresee really much coming in next year, um, for retail, um, so.
I met with him not too long ago, and, uh, well, I think Tammy and I met with him, and. Yeah, Daryl, and, you know, he showed us, uh, the map that had four lots that were sold. And then before we got done, he mentioned, well, one of them, they've kind of reconsidered now, and so I really don't know. I mean, it's.
And, and we don't know either. You know, you would, you would think that they would wanna get that road paved. The sewer and water's in, finally passed their, their tests on the sewer. The lift station is in, but not operational yet. Um, so their next step is getting the road bed in and, and curb and gutter and the street, but, you know, they haven't done anything yet this year. It's come a bunch of. Okay, good. Um, the, the good news on the sales tax front, we just found out last week that the medical marijuana is subject to retail, sales tax. So.
As it should be.
Yeah.
Again, not, we don't know what their sales are gonna be, what we would even project to be in that. Kind of looking at the construction class from twenty twenty to twenty twenty-one, looking at the categories that are related to construction. Um, you know, if we didn't have those increases, we would have been more down to that three and a half million last year rather than the four one. So again, sales tax, sales tax is always up and down.
Well, and I appreciate that you're always conservative with that. I'd rather have it that way. I think the elephant in the room is we have nothing here for City Hall or, or at least Public Works.
Correct, not yet. So that's, that's in the other projects that are, are the last item we'll talk about.
We're already at negative.
Um, and also, I can talk about this a little bit, on the operating expenses. Kind of our operating and wages, and then our annual debt payments, and then our added annual debt, and that's kind of what I wanna focus on right now. So running the budget projections and the capital improvement plan, may have noticed, maybe not. Um, that twenty twenty-three, that add an annual debt of two ninety-four is core right now, 'cause we always do the construction this year and then the debt's added next year. So that's core Phase Two A. Twenty twenty-four, that's six fifty-four five is actually for ironwood, and that's about two hundred and eight thousand of that. And Rush, and Rushmore.
How many expenses, added annual debt?
That number there. That is for ironwood at two oh eight and Rushmore Phase Two at about four hundred and forty-six thousand. Running these projections, that would be it. Like, core Phase Two B would not happen then. At these, at these projections.
Yep.
So.
Is core G more than Rushmore?
Is what?
Is core needed more than Rushmore?
Well, we have feeling, infrastructure right now on Rushmore.
Street wise, core area is worse. Utility wise, Rushmore.
Rushmore's bad.
That Rushmore area, correct me if I'm wrong, still has that asbestos concrete pipe in it, a good chunk of it.
Will that be covered in this next phase or? Like, is all of the asbestos pipe or not?
That AC pipe started coming in in the fifties.
So we have a couple different options. You can do add this and do ironwood and Rushmore Phase Two. And obviously, we, we look at numbers every year, but as of right now, that would be it. You can choose not to do ironwood and do core Phase Two B, most likely. We are getting cost estimate updates right now on core Phase Two B.
Two B is?
Third and Third Avenue, and then it'd be Dogwood.
And if we don't move on to, to core Two B, then we would need to overlay third, like we have on all the other ones. Now, ironwood, um, the Cofflin property is in the process of being sold.
Really?
Yep.
Yes.
All of it, from ironwood south to Split Rock. And there's, yep, and then the Peterson property are, are actually talking to Justin Oakland.
They're talking?
Yeah. So, you know, if they're planning on developing that area, ironwood would then be their responsibility to construct. Now, we would ob, obviously pay for oversizing like we do always. So we would pay for the extra turn lanes and, and side pass, et cetera. So there's an option B for ironwood.
The Cofflin property, is that buyer a developer or no?
Yeah, I, I, I think so, has, has plans to develop.
So would be, they would keep it as farmland?
No, I don't, I don't think so.
But you're right.
You know.
We don't know anything definitive, so.
No, you know, we don't have any concept plans or anything like that. Uh, we, we've had a couple of meetings with, um, their real estate folks, 'cause they had questions on connection fees. But I think that the buyer has every intention to develop the property.
Residential, commercial?
Probably a little bit of both. I, I would see residential from Park North probably. And then commercial from Park South to fill in that area between Housits and Park.
Well, you know, that ironwood has been a, a big push of Park Board, but I mean, if we could get it covered partly some other ways, my only concern would be to make sure that, as Jack had mentioned, a placeholder for that extra oversized cost, so that we would be able to do that if that were to come to fruition.
And I, I don't foresee those property owners coming up with a plan this year.
Yeah. Could we see on the map the, the project areas that you're talking about?
Rushmore, yeah.
Actually, I kind of think that might be a little bit of good news of Cofflin selling.
Yeah, it is, it is.
Cause he was frustrated. He wanted to go, but he wanted us to pay for it.
And same way at Cofflin too, if he's, just him and Peterson.
Yeah, there's, there's that whole fifty-foot strip. It's been a, a burr under their saddle for a while, that I think is getting taken care of.
That just seems like a, it's such a silly stick, sticking point.
It, it go, it's not just a new thing. It's, it goes back decades, to the seventies.
Is there any, um, when, if that is all being sold, are there any there that we wanna try to buy or pass apart?
Not really, 'cause we don't really match up real well. There's the Oshine property, that's immediately south of the park.
Match up grade-wise, you said?
No, just, just, um, geographically. We don't border a lot on Cofflin's property.
So it's Oshine?
Yeah.
So if you remember right, we finished kind of from here, we finished that, from about here, we finished that. So this phase would be this portion. And then Kirkwood, all the way from there to there, then Cedar. You could, now, the, the part that's failing right now is up here, right, on Kirkwood. So you could not do Cedar. That's about one point two million, not enough for core. And you could not do this portion of Kirkwood, which that is estimating about six hundred thousand right now. The combined would be about one point seven, probably still not enough to do core Two B.
So when you say failing, what is it, what's happening?
So where's the last, does that wrap, that doesn't wrap this up though for that area, right?
No.
Nope.
What's, what's left? Hopefully one more phase, but it'd be pretty large too, wouldn't it?
Well, you're finished on Rushmore. Portion of T town, and a portion of needles.
So it's still a pretty good chunk.
Yeah. We had anticipated doing four phases of that, all of that, and we've done one.
We already, we did Yellowstone last year.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
And all French.
Yeah. And about half of Rushmore.
Which of those were the big drainage areas?
How, well, how many phases are, are we still planning for the core?
Well, we've only broken into those five main phases. We haven't really broken it down anymore than that, 'cause we have no more budget's gonna be.
We have Phase Two A we're doing right now, so we have Phase Two B. And then you have Phase Three, Four, and Five, and we are, we're breaking up the phases three into A really As and Bs because they're too large.
But I mean, there's no way we can do all of, all of that.
No.
Looking at these numbers. I mean, even for extended period of time.
Nope.
So what's gonna be our priority?
That's why we're here. That's why we're here. That's why you guys get paid the big bucks.
I give you the numbers and.
Does it add to the cost, like, in, in the Rushmore section, if you take those two areas out, the same is one point seven million? Then we have to go back to them in two years, and it's not connected to any other area that we're working on? How much more does that end up costing us?
Well, right now, looking at it, it's probably gonna be more than two years in the future. If you delay something now and shift those funds, you know, it's, Christina doesn't have anything plugged in after twenty twenty-five. We're basically shut down 'cause we've reached our capacities. So we can't tell you that if we delay this portion of the project in four years, we'll be back at it. So we can't tell you that if we delay this portion of the project in four years, we'll be back at it.
We had anticipated doing that in two phases. I mean, we had.
The Cedar.
The Rushmore, yeah, we had anticipated kind of finishing out that loop. And a portion of Cedar, and then doing Kirkwood and Cedar in a second phase, so we could really get down to the three million dollar projects. However, when we got infrastructure that is failing, we either can include it in the project and fix it next year. Or you have to do a temporary fix until you do a full replacement.
And what would that look like if we just, if we fixed that manhole?
Just be.
Depends on what we find.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And you know, historically, if everybody remembers, construction costs typically inflate about five percent a year. That was, that's been the rule of thumb. I don't think five percent a year is what it is lately.
So when you say we would have to stop, are we saying because of cash flow, or are we saying because we're bumping up against our debt limit?
Cash flow.
Cash flow.
So we're debt limit, we're still.
Yeah.
So we would need to pause sometime after twenty twenty-five for an unknown period of time.
What's your best guess, couple years?
You know I'm conservative, so I'd say at least five.
pessimistic, I'd say three.
Yeah, I mean, you feel like at the budget projections, it's in the negative through twenty-seven, so. I don't know. It all depends on sales tax and what happens with that and where that goes. Private tax hasn't changed much.
Well, I've been a big believer that ironwood needs to happen, however, if there's a potential that it's gonna get developed. And somebody else is gonna pay for quite a bit of it, if we wait another year. It seems like that might make sense, even though it needs to happen. And I was, you know, I was down there the other night, you know, when the big storm started coming up, the night we had our meeting here. And there was a baseball game going on, and, but the other fields weren't full, thank goodness. And people got out, I mean, they had enough morning and that sort of thing that.
That's, that was only one game though.
But that was, yeah, the other diamonds weren't very busy, right?
Yeah, that wasn't a tournament.
Right, right.
So kind, kind of what it boils down to, if we proceed with Rushmore, at least in my mind, if we do ironwood as planned. And we do it as a city project, then core phase two B doesn't happen. And if you do core phase two B, then Rushmore doesn't happen, so that's.
I, you said, I think that's a blessing if it's being sold, that'd really help us. I mean, what's another year? I want to get it done too.
But. Do, so basically it comes down to, if we do ironwood, we don't do two B, if we don't do two B.
We need to overlay third in the side streets, just like we have the rest of the core to buy us a little bit of time. For those individuals who live in that neighborhood, don't know any.
That's a hundred grand, roughly.
Third and the sides.
Wow, with this year's.
Probably.
Bid that came in, it'd be lower than that.
Cause third street's about half the distance of fourth and fifth.
If we, if we don't do. Might be lost here. We don't do ironwood and we do two B, where does that leave us on Rushmore?
Rushmore would get.
You should be able to, I, I just need to get the updated cost estimate on two B.
So we could trade ironwood for two B?
Yep. That's kind of rough numbers, rough numbers.
It'll be, so normally, like a three million, well, core phase two A right now, so I borrowed three million dollars. That's at, at about three hundred thousand dollars on an annual payment. Um, I have ironwood figured in there as two oh eight, two hundred and eight thousand on annual payment. So that's about, you know, roughly two million dollar project, so it depends on where the estimate's coming in right now. On that and where interest rates are at the time.
Yeah, we're talking about two B and, and twenty.
Twenty, what's this year?
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four. Core's on even numbers.
We're back over in the Rushmore.
Yep, twenty-three is Rushmore, twenty-four is core.
We did that larger Rushmore project this year, took a couple of years off of Rushmore after that, would that help at all? Or are there other problematic areas of potential failure with pipes or?
There, there probably is, but it addresses some very pressing concerns that we currently, that we know, let's put it that way.
Devin, can we push up ironwood?
Operating plans for.
How many years?
Forty-five, thirty, forty.
But I mean, it's been a real priority.
Yeah, that's the biggest concern, is that now we're, now we're kind of leaning on developers. And, and again, where everything's at in the economy, you know, who knows? You know, if the sale goes through, which would be great, but we just don't know.
But we'd only, we'd only risk a year, we would know.
Yeah, I, I think we would know, cause the, their sale is finalized, have you talked to them? I talked to Craig Jamison the other day. I think it's pretty much.
They were going back and forth on.
Yeah. They were going back and forth on connection fees for sanitary sewer for that lift station that's down there. But when I talked to Craig Jamison Friday afternoon, he's, he's the realtor that's kind of working on it. He indicated to me that it's, it's pretty much done. So.
I don't know, I've still leaned in towards getting that work done myself, but.
I'm, ironwood needs to happen, but if we can get somebody else to pay for it by waiting another year.
I, I agree.
It seems like that would make sense.
When that development will actually happen either.
We don't.
You know, because that could be pushed off, we could put a lot of money into ironwood and then all of a sudden it breaks it. We, we don't have any of that development happening.
Great, and, and you know, we don't know. Most of the developers around here, builders, are in that step up home. You know, they're not in that starter home that they're kind of building down in Harrisburg. We don't know if the new owner's going to look at maybe that. For some of those houses, and I think that market might still be there a little bit better than, than the step up home in the three fifty to four hundred range.
Does anyone feel that there are any risk that, uh, the developer would say, well, if you guys aren't gonna participate. We're gonna, we're not, we're gonna pull out or we've got other options?
That's always a risk with developers. And they're looking for the best deal they can get, and certainly we'd sit down with them and, you know, our share is going to be whatever of it.
If they, if they're, if that, if they're that close to having purchased the property. I don't know, I, I have, I have a feeling that they're already thinking ahead and want, will want ironwood done as well.
Probably. And I don't know what discussions they've had between the buyer and the seller with regards to ironwood.
But, I mean, if that were the case, would that cut our costs in half?
Could. You know, then, they're also probably gonna sit down with those exist, existing property owners. And say, hey, uh, we would like you to pay for a portion of the street.
They'll say it cuts it in half, they give us another hundred thousand. I mean, that would be dead of a million, I don't know what the ratio is.
Yeah, so, you know, basically, if you look in twenty twenty-five, we're, we're pretty much done unless we get a huge injection of sales tax from someplace.
Hi, ninety. Retail, retail, retail.
Yeah, I'm gonna get there, I'll go.
And then that, that last, or not say the last page, the next page, the fund balance projects. You know, we got eight point four million in fund balance beginning of this year, a million of that for the big Sioux drainage. We're bumping up the golf course retaining wall to two million, and then exit four oh six is a million, which would drop our fund balance down to four and a half. Sometime in twenty twenty-five.
Are you comfortable with that?
Yeah, our goal's about that, four million, so.
But doesn't give us any slush to do anything else?
We don't refer to that as slush.
No, but I mean, to do anything else, that's.
Doesn't, you know, it all depends on, on how far you want to drop it, you know, we are comfortable with fifty percent. Of the, the expenditures being in the fund balance.
We discussed, I don't remember, how, how much lower? Five or something like that, since, anybody remember?
That would be a little low.
Yeah.
Some cities operate, you know, in that twenty-five percent. If you remember, there's another community here that operates with a zero. So when COVID hit, they were really in a panic mode, because they, I'm not sure what they're thinking down there, let's put it that way.
Zero?
Yeah. Yankton.
That's how they got that.
Yeah, they were operating on, on zero, so as soon as COVID hit, they were talking, oh, if we see a thirty percent reduction in sales tax revenue, we've, we've gotta fire. X number of people, because we just don't have a fund balance to carry us through. So somewhere between twenty-five and fifty percent, we're comfortable with fifty, cause it does give us some flexibility. In continuing on with operations, if there is a downturn and we have a shortfall in, in sales tax. I'll use a great example of a wonderful city to the west. When two thousand eight, two thousand nine, two thousand ten hit, they cut back a number of projects and, and stuff. Because they had projected five percent growth in their sales tax. And they based all of their revenue or expense projections on that, but they weren't hitting five percent, it flattened out. So they had to, they had to make some cuts, whereas we were fairly conservative, our fund balance was healthy. We, we, we had no impact, basically, when, when that recession hit. So twenty-five to fifty percent, we're, we're more comfortable with the fifty.
Would you be comfortable with anything less than that?
I've been, I, I've, I've been in places where it was significantly less than that, and I was not comfortable. Twenty-five percent would be two million.
He doesn't speak very well at my desk.
So, you know, if you dropped it to twenty-five percent, you'd be looking at something about two, two and a half million in the fund balance. So that two and a half million would get a partial project.
Yeah, I mean, quite honestly, it doesn't affect much, I mean, it's great for one time project, like you did with fuel. Chase the output for these long-term debt, that doesn't help much.
So are there any other options with that wall? I mean, it's really hard to swallow here, and yet we're gonna be out of money, anything in two years, but we're gonna spend millions of dollars on a landscaping wall.
Um, well, like I said, they're working on two other alternatives, and we haven't seen those yet.
What's the ETA to get those other options?
I don't know what he said, I can check in with him tomorrow. They were gonna do cost estimates on those alternatives, so whether that's gonna be cheaper or not, you know, that's what they're gonna work, they were working on.
Do they anticipate that that thing could actually flood up?
It's changed a lot in the last year.
It has moved more in the last year than it probably has in the last five.
So Andrew, if that happened, what, what would it, what would it look like?
It's like, you wouldn't have a path there, I don't know how much it would impact our patio. I don't think we know if it would impact the building. I think, I'm sure they, I, I think I've heard that it shouldn't, but.
Shouldn't.
But.
And I think that's where the contractors are, our estimates are coming in high, cause they are concerned about if they do remove that wall. How it's gonna impact the current foundation of the existing building, so I think there's some, I won't say fluff in there, but I think there's some in for that.
There's some concern.
Liability of that and concern of that, so it's.
Insurance something.
Who designed that thing, man?
Well, that's the problem, it wasn't designed.
Yeah.
It was just built.
It was an afterthought.
You know, if, if we don't do something with that wall, I think that in the next couple of years, we should remove it.
I hate to say this, but, and I've, I've said this before, but as long as I've been playing there, it seems to me like that wall's been more or less like it is.
It, uh, the last few years, it, it hadn't changed much, but when I went out, oh, what, a month ago or so, I visited you. It's, it's moved, like I said, more this year, and I don't know why, cause it's dry, usually it moves during wet weather. And it's been dry, but it's moved probably more this year than in the last four or five.
What would be the cost for Geotech to give us yet another update? So, I mean, they've, they've said they're not really concerned about it, correct?
The, the, the original sort of boring's, the patio, the building. That's all on virgin dirt, so they're not, they don't think it's going to move, or the likelihood of it. Rolling down the hill is small. But all of the dirt from that upper retaining wall to the big retaining wall, that's all uncompacted fill. You know, down to the base of that wall, that's what's causing the movement. So is there a guarantee that if you remove that wall, that whole upper retaining wall, there's, there's really nothing to hold it there?
Is there anybody could do like some terracing or something, where you start at the bottom and secure it? It just feels like somebody should be able to give us some more creative ideas than.
Didn't, didn't they talk about a terrorist?
Millions of dollars.
Yeah. And that was more expensive.
I can't see spending two million dollars on a retaining wall that could be built for.
Not when we're out of money.
We, they did review or submit something on a terrorist approach, but it was more expensive than a single, single wall. We can go back and look.
Sorry, you're really on the wall?
Yeah.
So what you're saying is you think it needs to be done, but we're just trying to be more creative about it.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, we're talking about prioritizing, and if we have experts telling us it's stable and we're out of money. Seems like I hardly put it in the top, it was.
And I don't know if they're telling us it's stable.
That's why I'm asking, we need an update, I don't know. I have not, so I'm very excited.
Or is corner supposed to be way up?
Well.
Geotech is going out there, I can ask them for an update online, they can check it out.
Yeah, the, the upper wall is, has been stable, but just like the contractors are nervous, once they remove that lower wall. Is that upper wall going to stay, number one, and if that upper wall collapses, how will that affect the patio? Cause the patio's what, four, five feet?
Four feet from.
From the wall.
Did we have many, many contractors look at this, or was this one of those that didn't gain much attention?
Well, I know in the last three or four weeks, there's been at least a dozen out there with plans looking at it. But I think ISG just contacted them and said, go on site, look at it before you dismiss it.
Yeah, the. The price quote that we got from I, the latest one from ISG includes a, basically a proposal. From a contractor that does shoring, is where they got that number from. So that includes, and I can't remember exactly, shoring it, a four-inch shot crete wall. And some other stuff, and I can't remember exactly, but it was a quote from a, GSI is the name of the company.
Stabilization.
And is the biggest increase in, is it just, is it materials, is that?
Somewhat of it is, I think a lot of it's the difficulty of the access to get to the wall. The concern of the current foundation of the building, it's kind of a, I'd say complex, but it's kind of. It would have been easier to do it right the first time, let's just say that, and that's typically sometimes how.
I mean, like thirty years ago?
Yeah.
And there might be some fluff in there, just because they're a little concerned, cause they get in there, that it might be worse than what it was.
When we do, yeah, cost estimates, there's always a percentage in there to, for contingency and all of that, but.
I, I think the, the bid that we did have included a lot of fluff, cause they had unknowns, they didn't know if they're gonna have to shore. That up, which wasn't included in the plans, you know, then they've, then they're looking at what happens if. You know, they don't shore it, and all of a sudden, the patio goes away, the deck goes away. So as we digged out into it, I think we're getting closer to a firm bid. I just don't see it, hopefully I'm wrong. Much below two million, I mean, our cost estimate originally was a million, the bid came in at. Much below two million. I mean, our cost estimate originally was a million. The bid came in at two point four. Are they going to be able to carve one point four out? I don't think so.
And then, you know, we always get back to the argument, isn't it amenity, you know, quality of life? Only certain people use it. We have that whole issue and I, I, I'm not going to argue that one way or the other, but. If, if we, if we have to stop some other projects because of that, we just need to be aware that we could take some heat on that. I doubtful, but that's possible.
But then if it, if something happens and it does collapse and we're in liability there and then all of a sudden we've got a lawsuit.
Or we lose the club after we.
That's kind of where we're at. We have the fund balance. It is a project that is needed. We are concerned about the liability in the future as well. So it's.
It's a double risk.
Yeah, it is.
If, if you don't do it and, and you move that money somewhere else, which would be good and nothing happens, every, that's awesome. If, if you don't do it, move that money somewhere else and something happens. Then, then you're going to be, what the heck are you people thinking?
I love we've been talking about this.
A long time.
Start with Geotech, I mean, essentially making a decision without.
Yeah, talk to Geotech, see what. You know, the original report from Geotech didn't think that that retaining wall was going to just fail. Catastrophic failure. It'll slough off starting at the top row. And it'll, it'll slough off a block. And it's, it's starting to. You know, the, the, the big thing for me at least indicating that there's more movement is that curb to the east. You know, that's probably another inch or two.
Yeah, and that part's for sure.
From what it was a year ago. It's separated another inch. Yep.
You know, right when you come down by the little half moving fence on the north side, there's a curve that's completely separated. And the gap over there has gotten bigger.
Just the east of that, of that catch basin.
And like you said, it's dry, so that's interesting.
Yeah, that's what's kind of odd. You know, a year ago, two years ago, I could, I could stand at the top of the retaining wall and look down. I could see the bottom of the retaining wall. I got to really lean over to see it now and I don't trust standard to hold me there.
If you're on a fall line.
It's what it looks like. So that gets us through the fund balance. Now the, the next question is what, any new projects? And we've got. Well, just in case you've got something that you're thinking about, we can certainly take a look at it.
Not that I'm proposing that we do it, but I would like to see a, uh, cost estimate, whatever. Even Aspen Park, Park and Park.
You figured a million, I can't, but that was a while ago.
Just that the baseball, right?
Pardon me?
Just for the fields or are you talking more for the pool and everything?
Yeah, the entire park, for all the dining.
Existing parking.
Yeah, existing area. And any, you know, expansion that. Helps tie things together a little bit better maybe? I don't know.
Go up with something.
Yeah, in our Aspen Park master plan, we have all those numbers. We could just take those.
A couple of things that we know of that, that have come up. Traffic signals at Lancer Avenue and Holly. For the new egg development.
Is that that one up, the bluffs over there?
Yeah. West of the funeral. Uh, they've just completed a traffic study. We're in the process of reviewing it, but currently it calls for traffic lights at Lancer.
I feel they're not too close to the.
I wouldn't, e- even if, even if they said move the ones at Heritage, I wouldn't recommend moving Heritage stoplights. That wouldn't be good. So it's, it's far enough in between the two. You know, as long as those stoplights are somewhat controlled or coordinated. But that's what they're calling for.
You're going to have that many houses back there and commercial company going.
Yep.
And then if you're industrial that there, yeah, you're going to need local.
Yep.
Does the state help with that at all?
It's a local road.
It's not even county anymore, is it? I think it's just all ours.
Kind of sort of, but the county has a good argument that we've used with them. We're not paying for anything until it's in the city limits or we have property adjacent to it. Well, we now have property adjacent to it. So.
So we have to expand like Lancer eventually?
Yep. Well, Lancer, Lancer will be constructed, at least the south part will be constructed now and then they'll extend it to the north. And then part of that is that Arbor Ridge Road will get moved to the west or needs to get moved to the west so it, so it connects up with Lancer. Now that's a whole nother issue between the Odys and the Van Buskirk's.
Which is Arbor Ridge Road?
That, that little road to the west side of the bluff is not really a road. Um, so that'll be another interesting, will be a part of that. We may have to use a little. We'll call it negotiations or encouragement to get Van Buskirk's and Odys together on moving that road. So correct me if I'm wrong, but.
At some point, are we going to have to urbanize Holly?
Yeah, and that's, that's also included here, studies. Holly Boulevard Rice Street corridor study next year with the city of Sioux Falls. And Minnella County.
Kerbin gutter.
Expanded.
That area right now going and announced.
You know, included in that traffic study, they, they did discuss a little bit of Rice Holly. Uh, with the traffic counts in the next, you know, few years, that would need to go expand to a four lane.
Can we get a bike trailer?
Possibly. So right now the, the traffic signals would include the, the installation of turn lanes. As well as traffic signals. Right now, traffic signals run about two hundred, two hundred fifty thousand per intersection, assuming you can get them. And then the, the construction of turn lanes. So, you know, about half a million. For that intersection. Now, we don't think that we, the city should pay for all of that. We think that the developer needs to throw some money into it as well. And we haven't sat down because like I said, we just got the traffic study last week. So we know that one's coming. I think one of, you know, Fairway Foods, I think everybody knows that Fairway Foods is interested in buying a parcel out there and their, their insistence on a traffic light.
But would it be over there?
Yep, it will be over there. It'll be the far west parcel.
How close is that?
I think it's, I think it's done. The, the property has exchanged hands.
What's going to be the corner between the eye doctor and Sioux Valley?
That's Quick Trip.
That's a dental office.
Dental office.
So that's going to be built in twenty twenty-three. And then we got the, the trail bike sidewalk connections. At least the start of them. The sewer fund. And granted, that's not general fund. That's sewer fund dollars. So we're not looking at sales tax having an impact on that. And then some street lights. On South Split Rock that we've talked about a couple of months ago, going out to Sioux. And then extending the street lights on Aspen from Chestnut out to Sunshine.
Well, we still want to, we still need to think what we're into about City Hall.
Yep, uh, we've, we've had some meetings with ISG. They gave us some updated numbers on City Hall. They've, they've given us two floor plans. Uh, one with renovations of our existing buildings. Don't have a cost estimate on that yet. To be, that plan doesn't look real good. Very cut up. We've got different elevations that we're dealing with. So we'd have ramps and stairs, et cetera. The new building and we're, we just had a phone, a phone call with them this morning. Looking at parking spaces, required parking spaces, et cetera. Cost estimate for building a new one.
Between seven and eight.
Between seven and eight million.
On site.
On site.
You think we can find somebody to build it or do something?
Well, that would be, you know, at this point in time, that would probably be the only option that we've got.
We can. It just comes down to cash flow.
So we're going to need it either way.
Yep.
Downly ourselves.
There's no, there's no benefit to us owning it as an entity, I don't think.
No. I mean, there is, if, if you look at a bigger picture, if we have a private entity build it, they're going to want to, want to make a profit. So, you know, they're going to build in a return on investment that if we did it ourselves, wouldn't be there. What that would be, I don't know. So it's, it's going to be more of a cash flow issue than, than anything else. So if we could get somebody to build it for us with reasonable terms. You know, may, maybe smaller cash payments upfront and then getting larger towards the end, I.
Loan or something like that either?
Yeah. And the shop. Those, those numbers, at least currently, we haven't had them take a look at it, but I would anticipate those are a little bit higher than, than what they were.
Yeah, what was this?
They were at six two.
Six two.
But we, but that was pretty nice though.
It was. You know, the, the big debate there is tip up concrete walls versus metal. There would be a cost savings on metal, although at this point in time, I'm not sure how much that would be, but my argument has always been. It was reinforced with some pictures I saw from Castlewood. With the Castlewood tornado. Uh, I think you want to tip up concrete walls in a public works building. Because you don't want it to be damaged. You need to get that equipment out and cleaning things up as soon as you can. But anyway, those are the numbers from the, the buildings.
If we need to do a stuff over the water bill, money people that we take requests. I'm serious. I mean, we may cross somebody's mind.
Yeah, and, and if you've got something that pops into your head or if you're talking to constituents over the next couple of weeks and they have an idea that you want us to take a look at, give us a call and we'll start working on, on numbers.
We can't, City Hall or somebody, right?
Hey, we're.
The money for it?
Yep. Close that down.
Like a legacy, like requested money?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, tell me this. I don't know what the process is to move forward from here. Do we come back in a month or three weeks?
Couple of weeks probably.
Couple of weeks?
Uh, what's that, what's that second Monday in June?
When are we going to start working on the thirteen?
In June.
Late July.
Late July, June, July, late June, early July, we'll start working on the budget. Some of us should be working on the budgets already.
I won't be here, I don't think. I'll be in Canada. It seems to me that, you know, we've had a good discussion today. I think what I would kind of like, and I don't know what everybody else thinks, but I don't think anybody knows any more about this than the three of you. And it seems to me that it would make sense for the three of you to come back with what you feel would be the best way for us to go. And then we can discuss that and make some changes if we want to, but it seems to me that that.
We can do that.
Does that make sense? I mean, you guys know more about this than anybody.
We'll look at the numbers and, and.
If you could come back.
Try to move some things around.
Yeah, if you could come back at our meeting and, and say, you know, here's what, here's what the staff and all your staff maybe thinks would be the best way for us to move forward.
We may give you a couple of ideas, options.
Maybe we'll know more about the cost.
Yep.
And don't take into consideration the fact that Harry lives on Third.
That, that's probably a negative factor on Core Two B.
It's up to you guys. You're kind of on those projects and where to go.
And I am one of the few people that you know that's been in favor of this from day one, including sidewalks. Anyway.
So that's maybe June thirteenth is, is that three o'clock again?
The city's not going to be here.
I won't be here. I plan to be in Canada.
Oh, you can stay.
Yeah.
Is, is there room wherever you're going to have a, a work session there?
There'll be plenty of, there will be plenty of suggestions from the people I'm going with.
It would be, we could call it a retreat.
Yeah, there you go.
Council retreat.
The second thing for a day today.
Yeah, there you go. Well, good job. I, I'm. I know more than I did yesterday, but I'm still confused. Yeah, it is. There's just a lot to do. There's a lot to do.
Really hard to get to the point where we're at, but boy.
Well, we've made good progress.
Yeah, it gets, you know, when you've got a hundred and fifty million in projects plus. And half that in cash flow to.
Yep.
Pay for it.
Kind of like real life.
Yep. We're not the federal government. Well, we can. I'm just not sure anybody would take it.
Okay, anything else for today? I'll look for a motion to adjourn. Motion, a second to adjourn. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Pose. We'll be adjourned.